Good morning or good evening to everyone. I call this a regular Board of Selectment meeting for Town of Kent, September 3rd, 2025, at 6:30 to order at 6:30 PM. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
It's play ball. Okay, a couple of amendments I know we have. I have one there after HC, under New Business, sorry, HC, Deputy Emergency Management Director. I have a candidate, Jim Limos, I'm gonna put him on for your review and endorsement of his selection. And then some of your committee resignation appointment, I'm gonna add in there a little discussion on the two cemeteries that we're also inheriting. So as part of the cemetery committee resignation appointment, I've been talking to Lori, so we'll add that in. Drafted RFP ordinance under nine, Old Business D, we'll strike that out. It did come in late this afternoon, I haven't really had a chance to look at it, so we'll have to, I'm sure we'll have another meeting at some point to deal with our ordinances, so we'll put that there. So, when he still had-
Yeah, I wanted to add charging smart under eight G.
Okay.
And I also was hoping we could maybe talk about the Elizabeth Street parking under Old Business, because I think there's more to talk about.
Okay.
That, okay? And then, the other thing that-
Sure.
Yeah, so maybe we'll make that eye.
Yeah.
And then, could we also talk about Fire Marshal truck under Old Business?
Sure.
Because I've heard a lot of chatter.
Okay.
Nice to get an update on that.
Your Old Business or-
Yeah, Old Business.
All right, we have the parking, then we'll talk about that.
Okay. So I make a motion to amend the agenda as discussed.
Okay.
I will second that.
All right, good. Any more discussions or anything else? Is it none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Good, all right. We have next to the approval of minutes of two board meetings, August 6th and August 19th. See anything I looked up? Is there any question, any comments on any of those?
It's something really minor. Oh, there's just an extra S under executive session in August 6th.
Okay.
Awards of selectmen under executive session, just the S.
Did you get that? Still sick? I'm not sure if that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion to approve minutes as amended.
Second.
That's it, on the paper?
Aye.
All right, great. Okay, correspondence, I do have a couple more things in here today. First one was, Mr. Tilden V Dowell of Kent messages, hello, I'm not sure of the right destination for this comment, please forward it as applicable. The owners of Motor Riot on Bridge Street are taking public parking spaces in and around North Main Street for the purpose of advertising their vehicle inventory. This takes parking away from visitors engaging in town commerce. Thank you. And, we don't really comment on that, but I did have a talk with Park Planning and Zoning, excuse me, on that one. Based on the last Planning and Zoning meeting where I was incorrectly quoted this, having approved, I said, "It's no big deal about parking on Elizabeth Street or Main Street." I never ever said that, so I will follow through on up with Motor Riot and others on that one, but they're not supposed to do that. So our second one is on, it's from Chris Harrington, excuse me, on a marijuana ordinance. So it's a selectman, Chris Harrington.
Yes, that'd not be read.
Oh.
If it can, if that's possible.
You just don't wanna read this one? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, sure.
It's just, it's suggestions on the ordinance or?
I guess, it was a comment on something like that.
But that'll be part of the minutes, right?
It will be, because he did submit it to us as a selectman, you know, as a selectman, so I didn't-
Because we can get those, and they're not in the folder.
Shouldn't be, I thought it should be in here.
Not in the folder.
Yeah, right, it didn't seem in the folder, now that, but, okay. Yeah, this one came, I didn't even see this one until today, actually going through to make sure everything was up, that's when we found the one from Mr. Tilden on Main Street. And then I was talking to Motor Ri- or, excuse me, Ty, Planning and Zoning, so, okay, all right, we will find, we will do that one. Public comment on agenda items, excuse me, any public comment regarding our agenda for this evening? Again, please keep any comments to the agenda as we've accepted. Okay, hearing done, thank you, appreciate that. We'll now move to tax refunds, and we do have four tax refund this time, all having to do with automobiles. First one is for refund for Nissan Infinity LT LLC for $206.41, and the next three are all by Toyota Lease Trust. First one is for $74.83. The second one is for $260.48, and the third one is for $276.84, for a total refund of $818.56, as submitted by the tax collector. Motion to-
Motion to approve this.
Motion approved. Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Let's get down to New Business now, reappointment of broadband alternates, Richard Welch and William Watts. Okay.
Make a motion to reappoint Richard Welsh and William Watts for a one-year term to the broadband committee as alternates, for a term to expire for one, 2026.
Excellent.
I will second that.
Okay, no discussion, I have none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there you go. Great.
We're moving.
Well, let's do this. The next one is appointment of Troy Kaiser as second deputy fire marshal. First one is still kind of labeled them, just so we can keep them, first one to stand, second one would be Troy. There's a couple others you might see in there that are moving and leaving and so on, so they're submitting their, their nations or whatever, but Troy is the next one that was recommended by Tim. I've reviewed his, he's fire code inspector and certified fire marshal, and has to be, I have a motion here, I already put it together, so, to be appointed, so, any questions? Let me make the motion first, so we can have questions. Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Troy Kaiser as Town of Kent's second deputy fire marshal at the rate of $25 per hour effective 3 September 2025. Second that, okay, discussion.
What town does he already-
Washington.
I couldn't remember.
Yeah, you'd have gotten right, yeah, out of Washington, correct.
Washington and Warren, he's the Warren Marshal.
There is, and Warren as well.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, any, if not, all right, all in favor of the motion? Aye, okay, great, thank you. All right, next is-
Out of curiosity, does Tim serve as deputy fire marshal anywhere?
I don't think he'd be-
I'm in Warren, Warren, Cornwall, Falls Village, and Sharon.
And are you getting, are you getting paid like an hourly rate, like we're paying him?
Yeah, so it's, you know, if I go to do an investigation or something like that, then I get paid an hourly rate and have to submit a, an hourly timesheet or invoice to the town type of thing.
Okay, cool.
Not to the Town of Kent, but to the other towns.
Okay, thanks.
Here we go. Okay, next is to appoint the town historian, Margaret Smith. I have-
Thank you, Glenn.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, thanks for that, Margaret.
Yeah, I know, thank you.
I make him, yeah, I've got a motion, I'm making a motion for the appointment of Margaret Smith as a Town of Kent historian in accordance with Connecticut General Statute 7-148, 5D, effective 3 September 2025.
Is it, is there a term or is this-
It's forever.
Forever.
The last one died in office, and we never really appointed that one. So, no, there's no term, it just says we can appoint one, that's what is the reference.
So you make the motion, I'll second it?
Okay.
Just wanna thank her for stepping forward and doing this, and I'm just glad we're making this official.
Yeah, and thank you, thank her for all those years that she was-
Marge, yeah.
Doing it.
Yes, yes.
And all her knowledge.
Yes.
It's great, yeah, thank you, Marge. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. All right, Cemetery Committee resignation and appointments are next. Yeah, okay. Okay, so, we have a letter from Deborah Bain, who asks, which says, "Dear Darlene and committee members, please accept this as my formal resignation from the Cemetery Committee. It's been a sincere pleasure working with such wonderful, dedicated members, and I have learned a lot about an important aspect of our life/death together in this wonderful town. I am grateful and deeply appreciative for this experience and thankful, and thankful that we as a community are such caring hands," one regards Deborah Bain. So, so this is also submitted by the board, or the committee, sorry, Cemetery Committee, so we really just have to endorse and approve the submission of her resignation and opening up therefore another position on the board for them to fill. So, all in favor of accepting the resignation, Debbie Bain, from the Cemetery Committee?
Aye.
Aye, okay, very great, thank you.
Can we typically like send out a letter of thanks?
You do, yeah, yeah, we'll do that for her as well, yeah, absolutely.
And are, is the Cemetery Committee gonna like do the whole two weeks?
Yeah, they'll put, yeah, we'll find out, Lori exactly where she's gonna do if she has anybody else in mind or what she's gonna open up. I didn't, I hadn't put it in the newsletter, I thought of that before, but we'll send out another stuff, yeah. Newspaper gets away from me sometimes. And I asked for it to add a little bit onto that thing, so this is from Lori, says, "Marty, look at the Cemetery Committee ordinance, it authorizes the town to accept the assets of the Kent Cemetery Association. That should include the two cemetery's association owns on Richards Road and Mount Maumee subdivision." And it was asked me to check with our lawyer that we don't need a CGS 824 approval for acquisition of land from planning and zoning, and that the vote is good for acceptance of a quick claim deed from Kent Cemetery Association. Talking to Randy, he thinks we do need an ordinance to accept this one, to add to the ordinance that we've, that we did when we created the Cemetery Committee and accepted the six, because we were very specific on accepting the six. So even these two were a part of the association, but were never submitted to us. Remember the discussion, they thought there might be a couple-
Yeah, I remember, and we had like a clause in there.
Well, that's what I checked out, and I don't know if that clause connected anything in the future to that, I have to, that's the part that-
I thought there was something about ones that were abandoned or something.
And that's, these are, no, these are totally full, they're, they are nothing more than, than part of what the Kent Cemetery Association had, that they never actually turned over to us in full name until I get this thing in a couple weeks ago in August.
Interesting.
Yeah, I know. I don't know, I think we have to look at the 830, or 824, I talked to Randy today or yesterday about this one, and he thought it might just be better off to do that, just because, you know, we're not buying them, or we're not giving it away, it is, we are assuming responsibility for two initial pieces of property, so we'll go ahead and do that at 824 for their next board meeting, if you guys approve that, and then move forward to adopt this either if I can get Randy to agree not to have to do an ordinance, or that we, because we've, you know, I have to-
Can we just amend the existing ordinance?
That's what I asked him, he said, "Do one or you just add one to the other," it's kind of, you know, I guess we could open up the, and redo the amendment and add it to it, yeah, but still have, would have to go-
I know, same process, right.
Yeah, that was the part that I was trying to, we couldn't avoid by just saying, "Hey, it's already part of it, we are accepted it," but he tended to think that we needed to have this. He's not sure we needed a 824 again, because again, we're not spending any money, we're not, but we are accruing, and he said, "It might just be easier to do that and complete that," so I guess that's my recommendation to you, is we just go to the 824 and send it to planning and zoning and-
So were these, were these private cemeteries?
That's what I understand, yeah, yeah, and it's, yeah, because, and that's the thing, but we have to do the quick claim deed. I haven't had a chance to talk to Lori in person on this one, I missed, I don't know where, I missed her last meeting a week or so ago, and, but yeah, I have to find out exactly where they all came from, that's the part that I, yeah, I'm a little confused on, we didn't know that for sure, but if it is part of KC, which is what she's saying, which I, yeah, and she does have the original deed numbers for the property, Lori does, and forward that to Joyce and us for, to do that with the 824, so.
Okay.
So I guess I'm, actually, I'm motion to go ahead and prepare the 824 for planning and zoning for the two properties identified, the two cemetery properties, one on Richards Road and the other one on Mount Maumee subdivision. Make a motion.
Second.
My motion, 824, second, okay. I'll write the motion up, Joyce, but it is a motion to move to an 824 for planning and zoning for the two properties, cemeteries on Richards Road and Mount Maumee subdivision. So, okay, any other questions about that? Yes, or yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
You're waving at me, hi, how are you?
No, no.
Okay, all right. All right.
So, Mount Maumee subdivision, not Mount Maui Road?
Yeah, yeah, I, the answer, I'm not sure where that is, that's one of the few places I haven't been around here, but where is that?
Dammit.
Okay, I'm not sure, I know Richards Road is, it's a nice place up there.
There's all these roads that keep showing up on the property transfers, and I figure they're all on St. John's Ledges, that huge-
Yeah, yeah, the St. John's, the peak of the ledge. Yeah, there are some, yeah, actually, it's a pretty cool thing. Okay, okay, before we get into the other ordinances, I'm gonna go back and bring in the second deputy emergency management director.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this is a, since the authority obviously falls on me to do that, but I've always brought those to you. Talking to Tim, Tim's been very good, offering his experience, his technical capabilities, which is what I always need in these situations, and coming into the EPFA exercise coming up, Tim said he had some time, he'd be happy to be the second deputy. First one obviously is in hierarchy of who takes over for the emergency management director, which I'm kind of feeling right now, state is aware of it and is fine with that, but Tim would be in as the second deputy, and we'll still look for the emergency management director and deputy as we go, but we're set for the exercise as far as that's concerned. But doing this to him, it gives him the ability to actually come in and help out his-
That's good.
So it is, although Tim, you know, has been kind of under the weather, but he had some procedures done, whatever. Anyway, he's on some light duty, but not no duty, he's got a letter from the doctor that says he can do administrative duties, functions at the desk, he can't do work outside. Partly why we needed Troy to come in, get ready to follow up as well as Stan can, because Stan's gonna be gone for some of the period that Tim is in recovery, but it's always good to have those people here, it's good, and I really do appreciate Tim stepping up to help with the LEOP and some of this stuff. If you know Tim, he is very thorough, very focused on administrative, you know, much like some others, yeah, and really helpful in that regard, so I will appreciate that in the next couple of months anyway, and I think the town will, as we go forward, so. So I've got a motion to the Board of Selectmen, endorse Tim Limos as Town of Kent's second deputy emergency management director, effective 3 September 2025.
Second.
Second, okay, any discussions or thoughts? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right.
So did you have to like appoint yourself, or do you just automatically get it?
I assume, it's, it's part of that, the chief elected official and emergency, you know, does that, and in talking to the Demists with the new director, Chris, that new Region Five director, if he came in in the middle of all this, he said, "Listen, look at my credentials and say, okay, you can manage that, best to bring in a deputy with you," partly what Tim is helping out with. He's got a lot of the, you know, the first responder and the other qualifications, and, you know, I've done these exercises in my sleep, but this is one that is really good, and we're all set to do that Tuesday night from 6 tonight, I'll tell you about that in my report, but yeah, we're all, we're good to go, so, yeah, yeah, I have to appoint myself, sort of, yeah. Okay, here we go, no buses on prohibited roads ordinance, I didn't know that, we didn't have the actual names until today, until Darlene came back and said, "Here's how it should be, and here's where they come under and so on." Oh, shit, the wrong one.
Restricted bus travel.
Yeah.
Commercial bus.
Here it is, sorry.
So did you basically take, or did Randy take the New Milford one and you just adjusted for us?
We did, we talked about that, yeah, we went over that and adjusted for us, there was one, one discussion we had about adding, this is Rick's, adding from seven, from seven and 341 buses would be allowed out South Kent Road, but we don't control any of those, it's normal bus routes. The big issue, obviously, on, I should say, obviously, but the big issue with New Milford and Gallardsville is the back roads coming into South Kent Road, right, when you get across the, it was horrible, as we all know, we've driven those before, so that's one where you're restricted in that, because it is in town, New Milford, they restricted to that point. So, talking to Randy and everything else, and Rick's recommendation was to really look at it, because that state thing, I just took it off, and it said, "Under operational, operation prohibited," is that no driver shall operate a bus on the following roads and road section, Spooner Hill Road and Bollesbridge Road. They're the two that normally come in. I won't, I will say, I've gotten calls on Treasure Hill, a bus is up there, I have, I have no idea, but people operating on their own, but this is, part of what this does is allow us to put more signage up with the state, off of seven and 341, make sure people know what the bus route is, get it to bus services, get it into Google Earth and some of the other GPS systems that people use. The one time a bus was up on Treasure Hill, they were using their own GPS, their phone GPS, instead of the bus GPS, so I don't know why they did that, but with these authorities and so on, the state and New Milford specifically, going towards those, we'll be able to find those, and we can as well, if we found the violators and so on. So, so yes, we, we did use New Milford, and this is kind of the follow-up to that.
Did you talk to anybody at South Kent School? Because they have buses that go on Bollesbridge Road.
We did, and that's why we put school buses marked equipped and paint is required while carrying students who travel to-
They have, they have coach buses, they have a lot of coach buses.
Correct, and they can come down for school functions, and-
Why does it say that, though?
Under C, student transportation vehicles is defined in CGS 14-212, used to transport students to and from school-sponsored events, programs, and athletic activities while carrying students traveling to school or purchasing students' food are not subject to its ordinance, so.
So in this state statute, it talks about coach buses?
It does, yep. Buses, in the definition of buses, we put our bus, is a motor coach, motor buses defined in CGS 14-51, and/or any commercial, private, or chartered passenger transport, tour vehicles assigned to lawfully transport in excess of 15 people, we did 15 because we don't want the trailer buses to get involved in that, so, yeah, so, no, we went over that specifically in New Milford and here with us with Randy, so that we captured, again, you know, the hockey buses, the visiting buses and so on that come, because you can't get to South Kent without going down those roads, and it's almost easier to come up Bollesbridge for those that are going for school buses. Those usually are a little better than the buses we have coming to Club Getaway.
So is the intent to make the Club Getaway buses come up Route 7 and then make the turn on 341 and then go to South Kent Road South? That's a tough turn, though, from the south to get on 341.
But it's a whole nother thing we're gonna be talking about as well, yeah, we're looking at redoing the light system.
Oh, yeah, I was on that hearing.
Right, I heard that, so.
But they didn't talk about changing anything.
But incorporating with that, no, we have to, my thing is, there should be no turn on red, there should be no turn, when you get turn on red coming from 341 on 7 to go north on 7, go Main Street, people inch forward, and that's where the buses can make that turn. It's not a clean, as a matter of fact, I was just looking at the map, it's not a very clean, tangential, it's all off a bit, kind of like my drawing, but, so, really, we have to do that. Rick thinks that might be an issue with the no turn on red, but I, coming up Bridge Street to go right on the 7 South, which I do if you go into Milford, the, you know, Land Trust or, you know, Farmers Market or something, which I do, even then, you're parked behind that crosswalk, and if we do the other crosswalk, doing right on red and inching up, you're not gonna see if somebody's in that crosswalk, and so, part of that, we can use that, those, if, in fact, we end up doing that crosswalk on the north part of Monument, you know, cutting across from St. Andrews over to the St. Swift Restaurant, then you'd almost not be able to do it, you know, right on red, should not do it right, anyway. We tried to see if we could do a cross, you know, like the kitty corner crosswalk, and yeah, obviously doesn't do that, yeah. If we had an island-
What about if you had a, you had a sign that said, "Stop here," or something like that, where that, I mean, that is pretty far back.
There is a sign there, it says, "Stop here on red," yeah, but again, that's part of what we have to enforce. Now, you can inch forward, you stop and then you inch forward to make that turn, there's no regulations against that, that's part of what we have to do in a regulation now, because it's state road, we have to get them involved, but part of this transportation, there's pressure to, I believe, anyway, the pressure to make when we do this, and it's 27, so, probably around, you're in border finance, whatever, but, and I'll still be around hanging out, probably making it really miserable, but we'll try to make sure that stays safe. I just think that, you know, having watched so many people creep up, and they're fairly safe, but still, I just think it's better off, again, because, you know, if we were to cut off the corner during the sidewalks, to take that corner of the mobile station off, we don't want them sneaking through there, I'd rather do no turn on red, giving somebody that ability to turn, the bus, the ability to turn.
It's very tight, I mean, because of where I live, I'm, I'm one of those people that's turning right on red, and I'm sitting there many times when these big vehicles come by and-
Part of what we want to do on that corner, where the, the light, the signal control box is, a big green one that's right on the sidewalk, trying to get that to move back a little bit, not that we're gonna change the sidewalk, but they will be cutting in the sidewalk to make those, like they did across the library and so on, in, by Falcon, that, that crosswalk's there, then they'll be making that in, so maybe able to shave a little bit, shave a little something off, if we look at that and see, it's all, it's all coordinated on that, that light system that's gonna go in there, so, and that's Tuesday, the 9th, at 9 o'clock, we'll be walking around down there, if you happen to be around, we'll be looking at it, doing a site visit with the engineers.
With DOT?
Yeah, DOT.
Oh, nice.
So they are, that's quick, they want, they really, the, I think it's November, December, they want the final inputs and everything else on design, and I put it in design for 26, to be finished by 27, that's their, their plan.
So is Rick making recommendations?
Yeah, we already did, we made a comment on that regarding that, that whole corner and the lights in the pole, and we're a little concerned about the, the pole itself that comes off the St. Andrews side, there's a light pole now that is on the state easement, all that is, is all state easement, there's no, we don't have to buy any easement for this thing, but they have the arm pole that goes out, they're, they're painting them black so that they're not as obtrusive as what they say, I haven't seen one to be able to compare myself personally, but it does provide a lot more strength, it doesn't have it all waving in the wind, they're worried about the wires as they get older, too, so.
But weren't they also talking about putting one on Reberti's Corner?
No, that, I think it's going to be on the, I believe it's on the Swift Corner. I, I'll, yeah, I'll get the, I'll send you that stuff, I waited for them to take it back and make the last thing, like I said, I was just looking at the, the schematic that I could blow up, I'll send you guys that to take a look at, yeah, and we'll publish that up as soon as we go, I think we wanted to see the site visit before we put anything out.
Yeah.
But we have got comments, people were listening to that, and a few people have commented back on it, I guess to the state as well, so, I don't think it's Reberti's Corner, I think it's either on the Swift Corner or back on, Rick, are you here? You might be there.
Yeah.
Is Rick here, Joy?
It's on the Swift Corner.
Yeah, where is that corner, the other corner besides St. Andrews, was it, was it Reberti's Corner?
Nope, the corner by Swift Restaurant.
Yeah, Swift Corner, okay, so I thought, would be the other one, so, okay, thank you. There we go. Okay, so, yeah, so, what were we, oh, no buses, ordinance three on, so, these are the actual chapters and sections and so on, that's all correctly done.
Have, have you talked to anybody from South Kent School? Because I think before this goes-
I, no, we haven't talked to them specifically.
Definitely explain that C.
Okay, yeah.
Just so they're not freaking out about it.
Okay.
I think, just-
Okay, and obviously, you'd all go to public hearing and so on, but we, yeah, we'll send this to, yeah, kid's school.
Brian Sullivan.
Right, Brian Sullivan, yeah, yeah, make sure that we send it down to them and let them know. Yeah, that's the specific why we did that, so that we could make it a school blessing to find under C, is it transportation and for athletic events and so on, because they do come down that way, and-
I'm just surprised that a coach bus can be considered a school transportation vehicle.
If it's, you know, if, if it's, you know, specifically chartered by a school for a school event, whether it's a prep school or, you know, public school, whatever, yeah, sure. So it's considered under that. It comes under those rules and so on. And that's, yeah, that was what, we found out, talking to the state on this, so. Okay, that's kind of the first reading. I'm feeling we're going to have another meeting to be able to push these forward. I'll get with South Kent, send it to them, get any comments back. And because we're going to, I'll hopefully be able to add in the RFP as well and then take this to.
So you want us to do a motion on this yet?
If you'd like to or if you want to wait, we could do that. It's up to you guys. I mean, this is final, I mean, it's as final as we're going to go. I'll just forward to them for any comments that they want to bring in to let us know directly or to the hearing for South Kent School.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm pretty calm. Since you've explained that, I had.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, we went over this.
I'm happy to, to move it forward to me.
Motion move forward to you.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to, send to public hearing and.
Yeah, make a motion to some of the chapters.
Seventeen dash eleven restriction of commercial bus travel ordinance, proposed ordinance to public hearing.
Okay. Second, again, all right. Ball favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. We'll do that. Okay. I can't do, oops, I need to take that one off. I hadn't had a chance to do the full development on that one either. That was, cut up on this one, so, sorry.
Table it.
Yeah, we'll table that one. You wanted the charging smart here as well? Okay.
So there is a group called Charging Smart and they basically try to help municipalities get ready for EVs. You know, their, their goal is to have like your municipal fleet as, as electric vehicles. And they have a whole sort of step-by-step getting you through doing stuff. So they, and they're working closely with this Voltpost company too. So the stuff we're doing to try and get the Voltpost chargers helps us get the stuff done. And then this, these same things also help us get points for the Sustainable Connecticut program. So they, but the, basically, this, the, the bronze designation is the lowest level. So. So, but they asked me to do this community-wide vision on electric vehicles, statement on, of community-wide vision on electric vehicles. The town of Kent supports the development, adoption and use of electric vehicles in our community. We encourage the transition to clean transportation technology in the form of EVs and strive to make, make Kent a more sustainable municipality. So I will make that motion to approve that statement.
Good.
Do you guys have any questions?
No, I really have a problem with the statement. Do you want to second it?
I'll second it.
Do you want to second it? Okay. Okay. No, I, I have worked with these guys before and, and with Wendy Murphy and, and others. And be honest with you, I, I have real issues with their pushing their agenda. They've wanted me in the past to approve things extra territorial or extra situational with the, outside the, the Board of Selectmen. And I wouldn't do it. And so they kind of backed off for a while. That was on the NEBI program and other stuff. And then they were, they seemed to be more of a, a very good proponent of, of, you know, smart and EV charging and other stuff that would help the environment. So I'm fine with that. But I'm not sure, I don't know exactly what their role is. I've never been able to figure that out. I, I think they're a proponent. They're, they don't provide anything. They don't help with grants. I have a really question about what exactly they do. Working with Claire Batte and, and Daphne Dixon. Two very refined individuals, but I, when we really started questioning a lot more, the kind of lost, they kind of lost interest in working with us. So I don't know. I know along with this and, and I'm okay with, with the, the resolution. But I, I did talk to Randy about some of the other stuff in here and I think we're going to have some issues with that. But especially on the, on the timing side of it and some of the other things. I know you have, in your report as well as other stuff, you continue to engage on that and I think that's what we need to do. But you know, I really, I have had some reservations about moving forward, too much into them directing us on, on what we do without going through proper municipal oversight and review. And one of them is to, is to name you or push to have someone named as the czar, more or less, of EV charging. That's got to be with the first election period. I mean, there's no doubt about it, state statute.
Okay, well, I mean, you had, you had said that I, and I specifically asked you, so I mean, it's fine.
Right, for sustain, yeah, for the sustainment team to, to work on this and pull things together.
But it was specifically for EV stuff.
Right, well, but EV charging, I mean, there's just a lot, a lot more, but you.
It's fine if you want to do it, but I mean, I just.
Well, anything that has to be done has to go through the Board of Selectmen and the, and the first election as well.
That's why I brought both of those things here, because I didn't want to do it without your approval.
Well, yeah, well, you can, right. And, and the thing is that you're not, you're, because you're not empowered as, as, as the first election CEO, you can't even assume those duties. And that's the part that, that this groups push people to do. They wanted Wendy to do something, wanted me to do something. And I said, I, they wanted me to make a decision like today on some, or tomorrow on something. I said, I have to take this to the board. If they're, you really want us to push something. And then they kind of backed off. So I don't know if they get, I don't know how, what their funding is. There's, you saw that you may be questioned about this organization's how they function, not their, necessarily their mission. I don't, again, have a problem, we're very much involved with NEBI. And I, and I sent you guys that note that NEBI is now, seems to be refunded under state that.
Yeah, but that information you sent us was also just a company.
It was an ad, correct.
Yeah.
But it's like this, these people make money off of the program too. But so, again, Lynn, I'm, I'm okay with, with putting a resolution saying, hey, will you support, I support that. I support having a, an EV charging community here and, and one that supports people traveling here, people here being able to have access to easy, how we do it, where do we go? I have a little issue with it being municipal versus commercial and retail. I think if the NEBI money is back in action, then I think we really, like we were doing before, go back to the mobile station and say, hey, you know, now that there's back in, are you, would you guys be interested in that? And so on, where they have room to do that.
But you, you still need to send me the contact information. I never got that for the mobile station people.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. But I mean, there's nothing wrong with having more than one charger.
No, I, no, I think there's plenty. I just, under NEBI.
The, the Voltpost thing, from my understanding of it, is, it's free to us. So I have not.
It's going to pay for it, okay.
It's a grant. It's a grant through the state of Connecticut. That's what I've been told.
And NEBI was a grant through the feds, but there was still a portion of it that the town had to control. And then they have to do maintenance once they get it. There's the tail to all these things that make me a little nervous, especially when we talk NEBI. I, I don't know for the Voltpost what, I mean, I, I did look at it. And, but, and there's some concern, talking to Tim Wallgern about it a couple of weeks ago, and he made his visit around, about bringing the two hundred and twenty volt down off the pole to the Voltpost on their poles. They're not necessarily.
Well, he didn't tell me that. He didn't tell me there was a concern. I talked to him on the phone.
Okay. Well, that was just a conversation. I don't, nothing formal. I, we haven't, you know, I haven't seen anything from ever source. I assume you wouldn't have seen something directly from them on, on support for this. Well, some of the questions, it's all it is, is to, before, you know, and I'm all for examining this. And this is what I asked the Conservation Commission to do over a year ago. And that's what Wendy Murphy and, and some others were doing. And Wendy kept going on this and then she kind of thought they were overplaying their hand a little bit as well, Wendy, towards the end. And same thing with the Voltpost. But that's Wendy, but you've taken that over. So I think we continue. Just, again, this is something that we can't just, you know, let them push us to put someone like you or someone else. Like you, but you in, in the situation where you don't have the authority to make decisions and then you push something in without going through our administrative processes. And this is what I explained to them before, Claire specifically, and Daphne, I think, that we have a process. We have a Board of Selectmen that, that do the policy on this and the policies executed by the first election and be happy to help. But I'm not going to abrogate that responsibility to make sure that, that we don't get pushed into making a decision tomorrow afternoon, because if you don't move now, we lose it. You know, that's kind of a, a part that, that may be.
So are we, are we okay with this statement?
That was my question. So, so.
Are we okay with this statement? Because this has no reference
I know.
to charging smart. Has absolutely no reference.
Very general, if you're looking at here.
Right, that's the one that I said I have no issue with.
Okay.
Okay, just saying, we encourage, you know, it's a word, so it's, you're aggregating.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Yeah, exactly. That's why I said I didn't do that. So.
So.
That was my comment overall.
Okay, we're okay with this part. But so the other part, you're not okay with.
Correct, yeah, I don't think.
You want to reword it, say that.
I would prefer to go back and see what we have to do with this in regard to what the smart charging program really wants to do, what Claire and, and Daphne were doing with this one. Why we need to actually have someone without letting the town decide how this works, but them telling us, you have to pick one person who's the point of contact or makes the decisions. Point of contact would have been fine. That would have been, I would have been fine with that, because you are the point of contact that, that we asked you to do, right? To say that. But when they responsible for the community EV actions, you can't be responsible because you're not by ordinance for selecting, which is the person that's responsible for signing and agreeing to terms. We don't want to put you in that situation. But, so I would, if part of it is to do the, the resolution, I'm all for it. But the part, and this, I think we have to delay that.
What about if I have to bring everything back to this, the Board of Selectmen? Because it just says, I am responsible for community EV actions.
If you look at the email, I don't know if you have her email, the initial email, you had sent that to me. I looked at it, it said, and well, they're irresponsible. That's the part that makes me nervous. Putting anyone responsible in the committee for whatever might happen and agreeing to things that you, you know, you don't have the.
But I mean, it doesn't actually say I have to agree. I could bring everything back to the Board of Selectmen.
Well, yeah, but I, this one, yeah, this isn't, this can't, this is not, we can't confirm this one. Yeah. I think we need, I think we, and I would see, she'll go back and find out for Daphne why she wants this in this kind of language, instead of as a point of contact to work with the towns. That was a question I asked before with them, when they really asked me to do something by tomorrow, it was actually within a day or two. And I said, I can't take this, I can't make that decision. I have to go to the board. I can look at it. I thought that was back in, I believe, maybe April and May.
Yeah, the first time you reached out to me was in April and said, here, can you interface with these people?
Yeah, maybe it was, yeah, to work on it. So, so, well, let's go with the resolution is, you know.
Statement.
A state, and do that, so statement, statement.
Is there a motion on the table right now?
Yeah, I made the motion.
That's it. So it's that statement.
About the statement, yeah.
Statement, okay. Okay, but you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right, we're about it. I'll pay for them on the statement of community-wide vision on electric vehicles.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good.
I'll ask you guys to sign it. And I'll find out more about the EV actions.
Yeah. Dig that up. I have this choice.
What about if, just out of curiosity, what about if, if I was representing, if I can get rid of the because if I was representing the Kent Sustainability Team, would that be different?
You are representing Kent. Yeah, that's, but the, the email that I saw from her made it sound like she wanted the one, you to make all the decisions on that. And that, maybe I misread that.
I think you might have, because I don't remember reading.
I'll dig it through. But I'd like to go back and just review that. And if we need to go back again, and re, point, but as a POC for the sustainability, yeah, as a chair sustainability team. This is exactly what I was hoping you would work on, that they could get the team to do, to look at EV and look at some of the other things. Obviously, the points to me are incidental to that. I mean, they're part of the program, but really moving us forward in sustainability at, yeah. I think it's created it. So move on that, so.
What would make you comfortable about this statement? If, if something were taken out, the statement of community?
I just want to make sure that it's not, there's word responsibility, which I think is in or parts of.
Is responsible for community EV actions.
Yeah, and responsible action, yeah. And so it's really in the board, you know, empowering the first election. But that's to make, to, to sign anything, any agreements, all this stuff, has to be the first election and working with the Board of Selectmen.
I don't think this is actually signing any agreements.
I just want to make sure that we correct that before I'm, that's agreeing with that statement.
Okay.
We could do that. I'll dig through the emails and, and highlight any questions I had and see maybe, you know, you have had that conversation with her, so.
All my conversations have been in emails for one meeting, but that was more with the Voltpost people.
Okay. Okay. Where are we now? Cannabis? Old Business on Cannabis ordinance? So the ordinance that we received, draft ordinance, yep.
Lynn added Elizabeth Street Parking and Fire Marshal Vehicle. Yeah, that was under Old Business.
Right, we're now in Old Business.
We're in Old Business.
Yeah, I added at the end, but yeah, I do have it here, an old business. Did you want Old Business, that's old business.
Yeah, yeah. I think we're on cannabis.
I think so. Yeah, thanks, Joyce. Yeah, I just, we'll do that, we'll do those at the end. Like, okay, Cannabis ordinance. So we went through and looked at it all. We had our discussions last month or so about the medical piece that we wanted to be specific that, I guess in general, the prohibition of the retail sale and the regulation of medical. He says, kind of what it came down to. So explaining that, going back to the, the planning and zoning, sending it to, to the lawyer. And then he said, well, then in that case, you just need that. You could have it, you know, more wordy, but he said, what you're specifically doing is this, the section eleven sixteen, the two very straightforward paragraphs. Didn't need anything else. So we sent that back. I think you guys, did you guys see that? Did I send it to you? I sent it to planning, zoning, Sarah and so on. Sarah came back. So I don't know if Sarah's on, but if she is, jump in anytime. But she said, she said, let's correct it. We had medical marijuana and not cannabis. She said, put cannabis in as well. And if it, if it's short, it's shorter the better. So I went back and said to, to tie anyone else in planning, zoning and Wes, I said, listen, if there's a regulatory thing that you need us to put in for us to defer to or something, let us know. And they believe it. It was no, as long as, the question was sort of what is the regulatory angle of planning and zoning on this? And it is whatever, however they would cite a, a medical or however they do it within state statutes for the medical dispensaries or whatever it might be, how they would set that. That's from my understanding, talking to our lawyers, talking to the state and so on, is that, you know, it's up to planning and zoning to decide where it goes. So we don't have, we have that regulatory authority. We, you know, get it as planning and zoning. So what we have to do is really, we prohibit or recommend the prohibition of retail sales. And then we hand over to the regu, regulation of any medical to planning and zoning. And that's kind of what's these simple two little paragraphs do.
Yeah, and Marty, this, this is Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
And first of all, thank you for addressing the issue with the buses in South Kent too. So we, we look forward to that conversation, just to make sure that that's clarified. With this, I thought the ordinance was, was kind of spot on. It was with, it was consistent with what the state of Connecticut's done. Thank you for clarifying medical and medical marijuana versus cannabis and that they are virtually the same thing. But you're, you're talking about how they're defined in terms of the regulatory environment. Planning and zoning can now, once an ordinance passes or doesn't, that'll sort of determine what we do in terms of our regulation and how prohibitive that becomes in the regulatory environment. So I think we're, we're at a good spot here. It's just waiting to see what the, what the town of Kent does.
Great, thank you.
Just seems very sparse to me.
Yeah, some of the best ordinances are the straightest without.
I was like, but you had this nice long one before and it's like, okay.
Yeah, and we went through that and actually Randy looked at it and he looked at the Roxbury one as well and said, well, you can adopt it, but he said, this, this will fill that. We, like I said, I went back to Sarah and, and Wes and said, any issue with this at all? And Sarah just said, she said, yeah, brevity is good. It directs, again, the prohibition versus the regulation, medical versus retail, which is kind of what the whole.
Yeah. And we don't have anything to do with the farming aspect and planning and zoning would deal with all that.
It would deal with all that.
Yeah, and then the state's already kind of so broad, like the state's done the work to define all of this already that, that you're just sort of inserting the language from the state. Which is a safer bet too, in, in case the, depending upon how this is played out at the federal level eventually. There is, there is no sense in us reinventing the wheel on this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only, the only concern I have is that, as I told you guys last time, I couldn't find a medical, solely medical dispensary in the state of Connecticut. They're all hybrid. So I have a feeling it's not economically feasible for somebody just to sell medical marijuana. Though we may not see much activity.
We might, we might not, but the. We might, we might not, but yeah, potentially, I guess. I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know what the medical environment is for marijuana or cannabis products. I mean, I know people that get them from doctors and so on and use them. Dummies seem to be designing and some other edibles and stuff, but I don't know. I guess, but at least it leaves the opportunity, if, if it develops in the future, we have the opportunity to, to develop a medical dispensary system setup, which is different than obviously retail, where it'll be doctors directed, and hopefully, like, you have doctors here in town again one day to do that.
And Lynn, this is one of the situations, if you, if you narrowly define it, you could accidentally prohibit it altogether, but if you leave it more broadly defined, then it leaves some space for, for that discussion to occur.
Okay.
Yep. Again, in the medical side, that's planning and zoning, it's a regulatory, it's not a prohibition. That's the part that, when I kept looking at this, I said, this really, prohibit the retail and regulate the, you know, like, kind of what I did in North Kent, if you really sensed, I mean, that's where I convolutedly, I said, I think cannabis on North Kent, although maybe that's not a bad idea, less waste. Anyway, but yeah. Yeah, I thought it was, I kept thinking, where was the rest of it? And then when I went over it with Randy, and then I called the state, and then I looked at this, and I sent it off to the planning and zoning and to Sarah, and I kept thinking, actually, why not have something that's simple and straightforward? Not what we usually do in government, but, you know, yeah, but anyway, so.
Okay.
I believe we are, I believe we are.
You have concerns?
My suggestion to the, to you all, when you do bring this before the town, though, is to perhaps provide or print out copies of what the sections from the state that you're quoting in the ordinance are, so that people have a little bit more information about this, too, so they could make an informed decision.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think we'll do what like we did with some of the Lake Warmog stuff. We'll put all this online before we even get to that point. So people can read it. Yeah, that's a good point.
Because in essence, what we're putting forward as an ordinance is very brief, but if you read it in context, it's actually very long.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to move chapter 11, Planning and Zoning Commission, section 11-16, medical and marijuana and additional marijuana, or, excuse me.
It doesn't have a title.
Yeah. I just realized it.
Needs a title. Because this is an ordinance in itself.
It is, it is.
Maybe you just do medical marijuana.
We could do.
Or cannabis.
Yeah, we could do, yeah, we just, I missed this. In section 1116, it'd be.
I was just saying, I looked, I went to look at what chapter 11 was like, couldn't read it, which is why I sent the email requesting the full draft, full set of ordinance.
Can we just call it the Cannabis Ordinance? Yes.
But the thing is, is that most ordinances have.
Yes, regulation, we could do prohibition and regulation of cannabis.
It's got both, though.
Yeah, that's right, it's a regulation, prohibition and regulation of cannabis. Trying to think.
I think you could probably just get away with saying regulation of cannabis in the town of Kent, because you are.
Regulation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, Sarah.
Yeah, okay.
Because you're still being permissive of medical cannabis.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, regulation of cannabis ordinance.
Yeah, that one. Okay, let's call it the Regulation of Cannabis Ordinance. Okay, all right, back that up, get the motion that we move chapter 11, Planning and Zoning Commission, section 11-16, Regulation of Cannabis Ordinance, to town hearing.
Second.
Any other discussion, other comments?
Thank you, Sarah, for your comments. Very helpful.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you.
When are you thinking these would go?
End of October, before the 24th of October, I was told, trying to look at that for whatever reason. Well, that's the last weekend in October. So I think we could, I mean, like I said, we'll have to meet again to meet on hearing dates and all that stuff, but there are some, some opportunities to do that.
Good point, though, to have the state statutes available.
Yeah, yeah, we want to do that. I liked what we did, really, with the, and that was very helpful, and we'll talk about Warmog, but that was very helpful there, so.
Yeah, one more item for, for planning and zoning, our, our prohibition on the regulation of cannabis, I forget what it's called, ends December 31st.
Right, and yeah, and there's that, yeah, there's that before, yeah, we want to do that. Oh, we sure, we had the December 31st deadline, so. Okay, North Kent Road next. As I said I was going to do, and we did, we did close down the road with mostly good support. I mean, there was a duck, or a goose hunter came by the other day, was a little perturbed, he couldn't go goose hunting down there, but he understood. So when we did close it down, you know, we had talked to the state, we talked to everyone else, except for Deep, who wasn't, again, involved as much. So, but we had the authority to close the road down, as I discussed with you guys, and we did that, and it's been very successful, last two and a half weekends, two to three weekends, I think it's now. Our resident trooper has gone up there in the mornings and has talked to people who've stopped, and it slowed down over time, although this past weekend, there were a few people early, but did move along, understood that. No one has tried to get down that we know of, early on, when we still were putting the tape in, someone did move it, barely get down, and we told them to leave, they did. So it was successful in, in stopping the activity of unsanitary conditions and, and the drinking, the loud noise and so on, that Ms. Martin was dealing with down there, but also kept, I think, we did talk to Hootsonic River, Hootsonic Valley Association, Hootsonic River Commission, and the Land Trust, all before, as I was getting ready to send out the note, so they understood that. They all understood and accepted that, and so we'd work with it. We don't expect that, I don't expect it's going to be very much longer, although this, looking at the weather, we do have nice weather coming again this weekend, so Vicki will be up there this weekend as well. We think it's going to peter off as people start going back towards school and, you know, times cool, things get cooled down next week, so at least the next week to two weeks, we're going to continue to have that. So in follow-up on that, I did send a letter to, to Ms. Dykes, the commissioner, and sent a copy to everyone else regarding the need for Deep to step up and find out how we do this permanently, what can we do? So that's where we are right now, is trying to see if we get this discussion going and bring it deep in. Part of what I think boosts our, our situation here and our issue is what happened at Candlewood Lake, as you guys are all aware, the 12 islands were all shut down for exactly the same reason. Also, they had, they have boat Ubers, familiar with that, they were taking people out to the island and leaving them there and not going back to get them.
Oh, lovely.
Getting stuck on the island with all the, you know, leftover garbage probably isn't a good thing, but, but besides that, there was, I just had chuckle at that one when I heard about that as well, but, but they had the same issue, and the five towns of Lake Warmog, Danbury, New Fairfield, Sherman, Brookfield, and Milford, did I say that again? The four or five of them, that are all, that got together with Deep, because NCON does patrol that lake in First Light. And that's part of the issue, too, is First Light is a very big, powerful group, as we saw them on Bowles Bridge, and that was a big issue a couple of years ago. They stepped up, helped build that parking lot, it took out some of the issue of blocking the road and people running back and forth, and they do garbage and garbage maintenance down there as well. So that was great, we didn't have that, you know, everyone that's there, HVA, HRC, ourselves, Land Trust as well has been helpful, has been trying to keep that road in North Kent somewhat clean, but, you know, it just isn't, it just didn't work. So we need Deep to step in. So this is the letter that we, that we wrote, sent.
Can you share that with us?
Sure, you didn't get it, it should be in here.
It's not in the folder either.
Yeah, sorry.
No, you can just forward it.
I did, I thought I put it in the folder today. All right, I'll make sure you said that to you. Okay, sorry.
Are we gonna, are you going to try to get a group together to talk about this?
Yes.
Because even, I mean, even if we don't get a response from the commissioner, we should try to get some kind of representative of Deep.
Well, that's.
At a local meeting.
Well, but the right representative, we've had representatives before, there have been people from Deep showing up, but I don't know what their authority is, or if they just came down for whatever, somebody knew someone, was an NCON officer, who came by periodically, periodically in this area. So this is why I wrote directly, and I'll read you the letters, so you can hear it, so we can put.
It's in the folder.
What? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's in the book.
Yeah, okay. Well, basically it says, on behalf of the town of Kent, requesting your attention and support in developing an equitable solution ongoing on safe and sanitary conditions along Hootsonic River. And I'll paraphrase as we go. We talked about the hot temperatures and, much like the issues at Candlewood Lakes, we're having people congregate at the end of the road, which is where our authority stops, and the deep area in the shoreline, which is on the deep, you know, unsanitary conditions are occurring, and we're trying to manage that, but we can't do it with that, you know, people trash as much as they can. But anyway, we talked about what we've done in the, in the past, and even up to now, to go down there, different HVA groups have gone down to pass out information and try to be, you know, collaborative and encouraging for people to keep clean, it just didn't seem to be working. And I basically said, this is where we need Deep's partnership. And, and I say the exact thing, I request that Deep work with the town of Kent and other factorizations to develop a sustainable solution to restore safety and sanitation along the stretch of the river. And we're eager to collaborate with the department and other partners to protect this, you know, this beautiful area. So, and that, and the groups that are on here are the ones that are, now, the railroad needs access, obviously, to get their maintenance trucks onto the rails, but they're not as involved as others, and there's been others, but these are the ones that really are, the one, Land Trust, the River Association, and the Commission. Oh, can I say Hootsonic River Association? I'm in Valley, my fault. It's in the Valley. Oh, crap. All right. Anyway, so yes, we will follow up with that as well, and through, you know, our state reps.
And did, did, in your communications with Jesse Klingonbeal, did, did you find out if there's any money from the Wild and Scenic?
Correct. He said he has some grant money, it's only a few thousand, he can do some things. Part of what we need to do is, is, well, or what I guess suggested do is, is how much responsibility do we take over for putting garbage in other areas and clean up or have people down there, but without the authority to do anything? This is what we had with HVA, with their ROVs, the River, you know, whatever, I forget what this stood for, but the River Associates, they went down there and tried to help out, hand out garbage bags home, but if people don't use it, we have no authority to go down and chase them off, whatever, of the river bag.
But we do have the authority to ticket people for parking, right?
Correct.
Did we issue any tickets?
You did, Vicki did, issued tickets down there. And no towing, because again, we can't get a tow truck really down there, there's nobody that really wants to come down to that steep edge at this point, but yes. And we did put up, Rick and his guys put up permit signs, you know, hard signs, not just, you know, a piece of tape.
And are they in Spanish and English?
There are signs down there in Spanish and English that HVA put up.
No, no, I mean, the no parking signs. See, we should, we gotta be, we gotta be smart about the fact we have people who have different languages.
Well, I understand that, but they also understand that, you know, there's no parking. I mean, people understand of no parking sign, I believe they do, especially when we're down there with our police telling, well, they're, they're going to park anyway, whether we put it in whatever language down there, that was a part of the issue, why we end up, because they weren't abiding by, even when we put barriers up, they were moving the barriers. So it's obvious that they, barriers don't do this, and they're doing it anyway, that was part of the issue. And just clean up. We had police pick up here, in Spanish, pick up your trash. We went and handed, the first weekend we were down there, Vicki handed out Ace Hardware, and I give a shout out to Ace, thank you very much, they provided a couple of boxes of garbage bags, they've been great, they used, they're always good here, but they provided garbage bags for Vicki to take down and pass them out. They just fill it, put it inside, we'll pick it up, and they didn't, their bags half open, bags never even used, that were just left around and stuffed in skin trash, didn't seem to get, you know, their attention. So anyway, that's the reason I think we did shut down, but then that's what, part of what we need to find out, how do we do this? How do we, in our own ability, whether it's a, you know, association or Land Trust or us, would the, you know, actually make this happen? So we have a little bit of time, I think, over the next fall and winter to come up with some solutions and actually get together, so that's why.
But it would be nice to have a meeting sooner rather than later, while it's still fresh on everybody's mind.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, that's the plan, that's the plan. We'll keep pushing on this and so on, so.
Good job.
Okay.
Registars.
Yeah, registrars, yeah, follow up on that. So I met with Therese and talked again with Sal. Again, this comes into, it, it, obviously, the issue of number of hours versus the duties that they have to perform seems to be quite different, because even today, we had to go through a whole bunch of contracts on the new tabulators, and then the software that maintains them and that operates and so on, it's all everything, so there's hours that, again, Therese has to put in, you know, to actually organize this, and have to work with her to go over it all and sign it. So there's still the hours, and that's where it's going to be budgetary coming in, I, we can't solve this really going forward, it's got to be working with the ROVs over the next year in the budget process to find out what exactly their, their real responsibilities are now that we're in early voting. We kind of stumbled through it, we had the $10,000, then the $2,000 to offset some costs. We never really got a true number this year. We're lucky there's no primaries, so there's some money in there that can be used for primary. There's a little cost with the, that we had to sue. We do have maintenance and IT costs in the budget for ROVs for their old tabulators. They had to run this stuff now, of course, more expensive. Tabulators are free, along with a tail of IT, which is now $2,800, I think, over the next year and a half. $900 now to the end of the year, and then another $1,900, I believe it is, that will be in the budget next year. So all that comes with some operation, maintenance and oversight of that, right? So what we agreed to, and what I asked Therese to do, is just, in her time, they do handwritten time cards that go into the office and you convert it, to write down kind of what you've done during those times, you know, and she does that, and I do look at them.
So they're not using the app? No.
They prefer, yeah, they don't like to use the app, so, okay.
But they are tracking their hours.
They're tracking their hours, yes, both of them track their hours, so they tell us what they do.
And are those hours getting input?
Yes, they are, they're getting inputted in, yeah.
So then, can Barbara do a report?
She can do a report on the hours, I don't think she puts the actual, I mean, in the paper itself.
But I mean, it's one thing having three office hours a week.
Are you trying to just tell hours? You want to report it to our lawyers? Yeah, you can do that, yeah.
Because I understand the office hours and the number of hours a person has to work, they don't necessarily have to be the same.
Right, and that's kind of what we're coming to. So I just wanted to make sure that we understood, and it's part of what we're doing into the handbook, is to really understanding what the job description is and what the new issues are that are causing them to have to work more hours and so on, so we understand what is to the public, you know, three hours, really, we're, we're kind of keeping the voting list going and working with the public and registering people to vote and so on. It seems way past that, without having filled it, you know, finished that up. So part of it is, is the job description piece, which we have the job descriptions out, Joyce and I are starting this week to now send them out to people to review, and I've got the emergency management, so are new, Tim Limbo's, we redid that last summer, so that's fairly, fairly new. Some of the ones liked it or disliked it, especially ones coming into election, we got to review those, well, you know, it's not going to make a difference, I think, in the election, so where people's understanding of the job can still ROVs, but, you know, so we're trying to, we're trying to capture all that as well, in the specifics of what are sustainable in those jobs that they have to deal with, you know, with Secretary of State, there's a lot more meeting hours, there's more training hours, so on, there's budget for some of that, so, you know, there's money that comes out of it, but when you plan for training, you know, it's just not getting their training, she has to either work with another ROV or something, or work with tech people coming in to work on that, that's different training than, than they would if they went to a conference, so much of the training on formula, you probably are more familiar with that than I am, I think you are, just in your, I'm sure in your job, you see a lot more of that as well, you know, you know, what you have to do for grants, and what you have to do to sustain your office. Anyway, it seems to me, anyway, to be kind of crazy that way. So I'm confident, I'm pretty confident that they're both focused. The idea of work from home, no. We've had that, we had that discussion, and you've made that point, and you as well, that we all have to check, we have to do other things. No, we're not going to answer our email at home and then say, well, that was 10 minutes. I'm going to charge 10 minutes until I get an hour and charge the town for that. That's part of the remote work and the work from home. And as you said in the last meeting, because I went over that, you really have, that's, that has to be a real specific reason why you're working from home. Remote work is only work, it should be non periodic, something that causes you to be out of town, or even at a conference, working on something, a project, whatever, and it's approved beforehand, not something that, oh, I had to work at home, so here's five hours, I want to charge. So that's what we're going to try to put in the, in the handbook as well. And so that's, that's where we're going to specifically delineate that stuff. And that, and I, you know, told Sal that we're not going to charge for that. You're not going to charge the extra hour for that. If you come in and do other work in the, in the office, great. If there's a lot of things you have to do all of a sudden, you need to just find a time to come in the office and do it. So we could, you know, that we can help you and support you doing that. And that's the place of business, not, not at home, in that sense, just checking your email and things like that. We all have to do that, answer a phone call at times, right? And, and so on. So even, even the folks that are on that. So that's kind of where we are with that. I'm confident that they both understand that. I think they're working towards trying to define that more, you know, so.
Do we have other part-time people that are in the same boat, where they feel like they've got to check their email, and they're not in the office?
Not that I've seen. I protect with Debbie and so on. Of course, she turned back hours, because everything is done in the office, pretty much, for the tax collector. Seth's the same thing. Our Seth's, is that works there. She didn't have to take anything home. Seems like Sal was the one that was the outlier. And, but, so we want to address that. Yeah. No, except for you guys, but I don't, you get eight cents an hour.
The lowest paid employees in the town of Kent.
We're fine. We get our money's worth on you.
Yeah, that's true. That is true.
For sure. Okay. All right. So that's up to you on that. Okay, the draft placement materials, as I called, stuff in the road ordinance.
Stuff in the road.
Well, we gave up with a better, actually, title for this ordinance, but stuff in the road is going to hit. Just background on this, I remember years ago, running into the town of Kent Public Works Director, when I was plowing one really bad Sunday night with my, with my brother-in-law, who won't be named, but everybody knows who he is. And we actually, I think we were working stone fence or something, and pushed some stuff on the road, and this guy came by and, hey, hey, you can't put stuff out there. So that was always in the back of my mind, like, oh, yeah. So I got out and started shoveling, and, and I just got the shake of the head from my brother-in-law, like, you don't do that. But understanding, and having seen it on Elizabeth Street, how people do shove stuff out, how that can be an issue crossword. So this, not only is it just the snow, it, it's grass, it's other stuff that gets out there that causes problems in the, in the drains, going out with the guys, watching them clean out all the sewer and, and the drains around here. There's a lot of stuff that goes down there that could be prevented. And it's really the property owner's responsibility, or whoever they hired to do that. So this was basically the, what's been out there. I think Warren used this, like, Washington has something similar, and was adopted and reviewed by the lawyer, and is recommended as the placement materials in the public right-of-way ordinance.
So the fine is $100?
Yeah, it couldn't go up to $250. I said, no, keep it at $100. I thought this is, it's more of a collaborative, just kind of get people, again, to be cooperative and clean it up. I mean, if it's, if there's egregious, you know, consistent issue that, that Ricker has noted, and sends it back, or the, or the plow, the guys on the town crew noted, that somebody's consistently doing that, then we'll deal with that. But I, you know, we're not really looking to find people as much as to get, change their, their attitude in their, in their work, just to clean out the stuff that they put in the road. So.
And this, this process of citation and then appealing with a hearing, that's similar to the other ordinances?
Same one we have, yeah, for the, yeah, for the, yeah, as we compared it to, was the Fire Marshal's ordinances and stuff.
Okay. I can't believe we haven't had this.
I know. We talked about it for a while, and, and actually, I give Joyce a lot of credit.
Especially with the snow. I thought for sure we had something about snow.
Well, that's what I thought years ago, too, that they would holler at me for that. But I give a lot of credit to Joyce. She, you know, actually helped prepare all this and got Rick to finally say, let's do it. You know, it makes sense to me.
So I make a motion that we move to public hearing, the placement of material in the right, public right-of-way ordinance 17-10. Did I do that right?
You did. Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? If not, all on paper.
Aye.
Aye. There. Okay. Okay. This is the resolution on the public safety.
Communication towers, I renamed it.
Cell towers, right. Yeah.
I beefed it up a little bit.
Yeah.
I thought it was important to explain the why, of why it was necessary. So that's why I stuck in all those whereas.
Yeah, whereas and stuff.
And I went back, I actually went back to the pollinator pathway one, to sort of say, what, what do we normally do?
So do you want to make a motion? I don't know.
Sure. I'll make a motion that we approve. It doesn't really have a title. Resolution on communication towers, can I say that?
Thank you. Good work.
Okay. I think so.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, I have something. I'm trying to find it also. Yeah, under, the thing that I saw that I don't, I haven't been able to find a way we can enforce that, is under the now therefore be resolved paragraph, which is like the, in the town of Kent hereby recognize and support dot com towers, including cell towers proposed, but in the town are required to offer space. I don't think we require it. I think we can petition the Siting Council, they're the one that can actually do that. You can only recommend to the Siting Council. That's the, that's the process for it. So requiring, I don't think we can put that word in. So we can, you know, change that. Yeah, we can say request. Yeah, we can request.
Are requested? So.
Are requested, yeah.
Are requested to offer space for communication at no additional cost. Did you run this by?
I did write it to Randy over the top, yeah.
Agree with that?
He thought, yeah, he said the same thing. We can't, yeah, really, we can't, as a public entity, force a civilian organization to do that. It has to, besides, we don't make that decision as a Siting Council. Now, requesting that, that they keep, all cell towers keep a portion of the tower available for, for local communications, emergency communications. This is one that we want to make sure that we establish that, and through the Siting Council, I think we, we can do that. So.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's what, that's kind of what Randy said, so.
Anything else? The bottom part was all came from.
Right. Yeah, that's all that I guess for.
Do you want to amend the motion?
Yes, you can.
I'll amend the motion for the paragraph that starts near now therefore, be it resolved that in the town of Kent, Connecticut does hereby recognize and support that all communication towers, including cellular towers, proposed in the town of Kent are requested to offer space for communications equipment for the Kent Public Works Department, Kent Emergency Management Department, and Kent Volunteer Fire Department at no additional cost.
Good. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's good, that's good.
Right.
If I can conclude that. Okay, let's see. Okay, social media policy.
Is there any action on it?
No, no more than what we had. I think we're, we've kind of made the changes.
Somebody's got to be in charge of making the changes.
Right. Well, yeah. Well, I mean, we'll do that in, in office. But, yeah. I think I just have to go back and work with, with Darlene on that. Well, we have, obviously, she's looked at numerous times.
Have to consolidate it and make it more.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think also we need the procedures. We need like a separate document.
Absolutely. That's, that's the thing.
Procedures, the internal procedures of what needs to happen.
Right. That's the piece, I think, that Darlene was asking of us.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so.
And I think that's where, you know, people need to know, you know, it's not just putting it in, it's connecting all those communication pieces of instant contact emails, posting it on the website, and then social media.
Yeah.
So it's like, it's all those pieces.
Yeah.
So people understand what the process is and the procedure.
Yeah, you're right, absolutely right. That's the, all right, let me go back and we'll, we'll work on the procedure piece to that, to this policy. That's a piece that we need, you're right.
I think that might simplify things, because if you put all that out of it, and then you could just focus on the policy part, I think that would make it a lot simpler.
Makes sense. Yeah, thank you. I'll be honest, I was kind of lost a little bit in that. I'm not sure where to go with it. I really, I mean, we're hearing, you know, what we're trying to do to recognize it. The work's to put in, policy. Yep, question?
Maybe not.
Okay, give some else. Anyway, but yeah, forward on that one. All right, now let's go back on that, and keep doing it. All right, Swift House update, let's go to the next one. What do you guys want to do with that?
I, I want to do what I said at the Board of Finance meeting, that we should leave it for the next Board of Selectmen to deal with.
I agree. Actually, in my report, I'm going to, I won't talk much about the Swift House, but I've got some questions. So you'll, you'll see where I'm going.
I have no more.
I've got, I've got no more.
They hit on that one, so, okay. All right, we'll, we'll just, maybe that one, move forward. All right, then we're Elizabeth Street Parking. Yeah, we have to come up, we haven't come up with all the ordinance is going on, a change to, or in addition to what we have, which is, again, no parking or wintertime. That's the only ordinance that we have in town, that just, just specifically talks parking on streets during wintertime. I think we probably need to, there's the, the only modification, any parking, and parking's allowed, is during the school days, you know, you're allowed to park, we have signs up on the south part of Elizabeth Street, and no parking during the, from like 8 to, well, 3:30 more or less, and buses go through there. So that's the only parking on that side that, so if you want to draft, if we want to draft another comprehensive parking plan, probably need to do that as well.
But why, I, I didn't watch the meeting, but I read the minutes. Why didn't planning and zoning, why didn't they, did you talk to Ty at all?
I talked to Ty, just, yeah, just today about that. I did not.
I don't understand why, why they chose to do what they did. Because usually, when somebody has a business, they're required to have a certain number of parking spaces for their employees and for the public. But it seemed like they were just sort of like, yeah, it's fine if you want to park them.
From what I understand, and, and, and I don't think Ty's on, but, or maybe Sarah, if you're, if you're still on, you might be able to talk about what you did with the planning and zoning board. But they came up with a plan, or the lawyers and so on for Motor Riot, came up with a better parking plan. The issue that, that I had, that Barry brought up, was the workers didn't have anyplace else to park, because they had, there were too many vehicles, or, you know, they had, at that time, two handicap parking spots, or, you know, and so on, and they wanted to do that. So they came up with a plan to rejigger all that, and Planning and Zoning approved that. I believe it's 20 spots, if I remember right. And I'm not even sure how that works out, but we've kept, continue issues with more parking. We've had, and we saw that, the letter today about parking in areas where they're still presenting their vehicles for sale, which is illegal. I do know that last planning and zoning, that Motor Riot made a statement, and that's the part that I brought up, that I had said, oh, yeah, sure, you can park no problem anywhere on Elizabeth Street, or paraphrasing that, which I've never even discussed that with Jason Dornick. That was not the subject of my conversation with him on two separate occasions that I've met with him in the past month, maybe two months. So it was all about planning and zoning will regulate that and deal with that. There is, we, the only thing is that we have no ordinance on parking on the street. However, they, what I understand, some of the workers are trying to cooperate with the, you know, the people on the streets to park in front of certain people's parking, driveways and so on. They're trying to be accommodating. It certainly moved from the, during school days, from the south side to the north side, where there wasn't a restriction on parking. I never say you can park on Main Street. I never say you can park anywhere. The only restriction is, part, or the regulations say that to park a vehicle on a state highway, which both 341 and 7 is, is that you have, must be registered. It, it, it must be privately owned. You can't, like, put a QR code for sale and put it up there, because as Ty and I talked today, as she, you know, correctly pointed out to me, is that the only place Motor Riot's allowed to sell their vehicles is on the property of Motor Riot. They can't put it up at 45, they can't put it up next to the Kent Kitchen, which I guess they did during the sidewalk days. I did see that, one of their cars there. I didn't, I guess I really, I thought it was a demonstration. But anyway, so that's been communicated back to them. So I haven't seen any of their vehicles parked up there with a, like, for sale or a QR code or something, that, you know, would be a sales technique for the vehicles. I haven't seen that. But, well, can do it. So, but I don't, I, I'm all in favor of actually finding some parking restrictions on, like, one side, you can park one side of the road, not the other. But I think it comes down to where, in the town, where do we come up with a better parking situation for the town in general, like a beautiful parking lot? And that was part of what I think I talked about a year.
I know. Shouldn't a business have to take care of their employees' parking? I mean, that's my question. Shouldn't a business have to provide for their employee parking?
I think generally, I think we, unfortunately, and this front maybe seemed like a little slammed, planning and zoning, is that I know talking to Chucky at Camp Pizza Garden, he had to provide all kinds of parking and expand and buy some little property so he could have it. But then he's off seven. Now, some of the current, and I probably misspeaking, but I know for a fact that some of the, the businesses that they're on Main Street now, some of the eateries, you know, have, don't necessarily have to have a parking, or they have parking behind the barns or whatever, and, and everybody gets to count it against themselves. Because if you look back there, there's not that many here. Down, and she might be able to explain a little bit of that, since she's one of the experts here. But I know that there has been questions about that, and, and same with the library, same with others. It's where, I guess, they've been able to count parking spaces as, as whatever planning and zoning has for each of the businesses, I guess, based on the.
But they go through that process with planning and zoning, and they negotiate it, you know?
Yeah, supposedly. I mean, I guess it, I don't, that's part of it. Donnie, why don't you go ahead? I'll let you jump in.
Every, every company or business does have to provide a certain amount of employee parking. Whether or not those employees park in those spots, you know, I mean, it's really, it would be up to Motor Riot or whoever to enforce that their employees park in those spots. From what I saw at the meeting the other night, they reduced the number of parking spaces so that they could reduce the number of handicap spots, but they still have enough parking spaces for their employees to park there. And I, I think one of the reasons, one of the things that needs to be done, I'm not sure who's going to enforce this, is that you need to ask Motor Riot to make sure that their employees are parking in the employee parking spaces that are provided by the company on the site plan.
That, that's a very good point. And I will just observe, being on Elizabeth Street, I have not seen the number of cars parked on the north side that I saw last spring, you know, when this was coming up. So over the wintertime. So I don't know if they are parking, you know, they're taking advantage of that, Don, as you said, in their, their parking lot, at the build of the business itself. I haven't seen and noticed anything more than a couple people, like, outside the condos, or, or, you know, maybe people that are living on Elizabeth Street to my parking front, taking advantage of that. But the only thing, yeah, I can think of, if we wanted to regulate, you know, only this side of parking on one side of the street or something, if that would help the residents on Elizabeth Street. It might. I don't know. I don't know. We can, we did, like you said, we put the sign and no parking to the corner, because people were parking on that corner right away. Rick and the guys put it up there. We moved it to 25 feet, which is what the regulations for the state, minimum of 25 feet. And, you know, and again, and as I said, it goes back to whatever we could do, if we could provide any kind of additional parking for the town, for people to park there and open up Main Street or, or whatever. I don't, I don't know. I know that there's people that, that work in other businesses in town here that park in the Welcome Center parking lot. They don't really have any restrictions, except for overnight parking. That's the only thing we put on that restriction. So people will park probably in the bank at different times, the bank parking lot, the Webster Bank parking lot, to go somewhere. But I did see somebody who was a businessperson, I know of, parked today in the, in. But I did see somebody who was a businessperson, I know of, parked today in the, in, you know, town parking unit, whatever, in the Welcome Center and walk into the business. So, I don't know how long, maybe they were only there for a short time, but then, yeah. I, you know, so unless we get with planning and zoning and decide to, you know, really look at that, I don't know. I think, see how part of the issue was with Motor Riot parking on Elizabeth Street, I'd see how that plays out if there's not parking there necessarily.
I think we should encourage the residents to communicate with us if it continues to be an issue.
Well, I think we're only from Barry. Yes, definitely. I haven't heard from him in a while, I haven't, you know, seen him lately, but yeah, I have a feeling we will.
But I haven't seen, I have not seen the traffic.
Have you?
We both saw that.
Yeah, right, yeah, we did.
I've not seen that.
Yeah, and it's getting started at school too, and I know that I had chased some of our workers off the street and kind of forgot that it was school starting last week, so. But they pulled in the parking lot and they were fine, so. But yeah, I think we're certainly, people are getting aware of, you know, some of the restrictions, especially on the south side of Elizabeth Street, parking, not blocking buses, things like that. But yeah, we can, you know, we've got the Ranger Rick up on the north side of the lane. We'll keep moving that that way. But yeah, I walk up that way to work when it's not raining, so I haven't seen it at eight thirty or whenever they come up, so. But anyway, but yeah, good point, you know.
Good.
Keep it going. Okay, and you want to talk about the fire marshal's truck?
So we, we heard, those of us who went to the Board of Finance meeting heard about a new truck purchase, so I just wanted you to explain.
Sure.
How did that process come about?
Right, previously when we had Stan McMillan, he used, as a fire marshal, he used a Town of Sharon truck. And we reimbursed for the use of that truck on our Kent missions and so on. When Tim came in, part of the discussion we had was how did he handle some of the incendiary and other issues, the other material that he would collect under investigation? He didn't have a vehicle that would separate it. Most fire marshals have a cab on the back of a truck, and that allows them to separate things, put it into a container and so on, that doesn't allow it to off gas or whatever it might be. It protects both the fire marshal, the individual, and preserve the evidence when they do investigations. So having looked at that, we said, well, we'll try to look if we can find appropriately priced vehicle that that we could purchase for the fire marshal, because he's now an employee of the town of Kent, not hired through the town of Sharon or whatever, which is what Stan was. So at the end of the year, like a lot of vehicles, a lot of times towns turn in vehicles. There were two vehicles that came online. One, the sewer commission jumped on for the sewer commission to use in their separate entity. At the same time, the second one came on that was under ten thousand dollars. So it was ninety-six fifty-five was the total amount of that, which is under the ten thousand dollar limit for us to go to the board and so on. And these are situations where you have like two days to put a bid in on it, or in this case, you put in a notice that you're interested in the vehicle. And they decide whether they're going to go to bid or let the towns do it. And it's probably about a, maybe a two-week, maybe a three-week period max before they finally decide to release it and you can pay it. So the end of the year, Rick had in his new, his vehicle purchase line, had some money in that to do that. So I took the authority and the ability to actually move forward on that and get Tim that truck for fire marshals. Partly, we saw the issue up with incendies up at Kenmont this summer, where he had to move materials that were electronics and so on. There were, you know, materials that had to be preserved. He was able to do that and work with the state fire marshal to keep that there. But state fire marshal, we used his vehicle since we didn't have one of our own at the time. So again, it was just the opportunity to do this, I think the intent, you know, I'd make that pretty straightforward. We were looking to try to find the right kind of vehicle under the thing, it's thirty, Tim, I know if you're on here, but it's thirty-some thousand miles on it, in great shape. Sorry, looked at, probably have to get tires.
It's a, it's a twenty fifteen with thirty-six thousand miles on it. Really, there's like no rust at all underneath it. It's a really, really, really good condition truck.
Yeah. And we're taking advantage of outfitting it so on with material that's used from other vehicles, from other fire marshals, so like white lights and things like that. That we're going through the town to put the town decals on it. Again, the fire, or the discussion we had one time with the Board of Finance of just slapping some mechanic, or, you know, mechanized, or excuse me, some magnetized signs on it, on personal vehicles. We can't do that, especially in the fire marshal vehicle. So, so that's, that's kind of the story. It was a quick thing in the end of June into July, and we finally got it, or, I'm sorry, end of July, yeah, June into July. I'm sorry, when we found that vehicle. And when we did the workup before the budgets all closed, we were able to use that money to purchase a truck.
Does the town have any policies on use of vehicles?
We do, and we were updating the one, I just got one, Tim, I asked him to go out and research one, and he did put it for me, and I have that on my desk to review. I just want to make sure it fits in with, with his deputy duties otherwise, that, and, you know, and he's aware right now, he's in a direction that there's no personal use of the vehicle, no family members are in the vehicle, it's sort of work only. He can take it home because he's called out at night instead of trying to drive here or drive back where he lives up on three forty-one. So, you know, and he tracks all of his mileage, he has a program that allows him to do that, so we know exactly, you know, how the vehicle's being used and so on. And if you know Tim at all, he's a techno, techno geek anyway in a sense, so he brought in, it showed me what he planned to use for, for monitoring that, and it makes all the sense. So we'll have all the writeouts to pronounce, he's doing a log of when it's used, when it goes out and when it comes back, so, on every, on every call. So that will, I mean, it's somewhat similar to what, probably more strict and certainly than what Public Works does, or what Rick does with his vehicle, because he's everywhere all the time. But, so, so yeah, we have, we do have policy, and we'll bring that to you guys to actually make a more formal policy. Because if there is, you know, we now have the parking rec and the, and the vehicle used in two different manners, so to speak. Because it's used, the parking rec is a lot, used during the day, back and forth to run up to Emory or run to the school, you know. He uses that quite a bit. And we also have to recognize at times when it needs to be any repair or review, or, you know, look at maintenance and so on. We use Tobans, we use local, we try to do that. But occasionally, if we have to go to get outfitted and have to go out of town, you know, it's in advance, we know where the vehicle's going to go. So if somebody sees it on its way up to Litchfield or something, or somebody stopped there to get a cup of coffee or buy lunch if they've been out all day, that, you know, it's reasonable use kind of thing. But definitely, we do manage it. Yeah, we're not planning on, you know, I know, you guys know I'm in favor of being able to look at the town use, even whether it's the assessor or land use and so on, to be able to go out and do inspections. And this monthly assessor's been out, she gets mileage for doing that. But also having the ability to identify yourself. People know, we've had one instance where land use was kind of caused by someone that they thought was knowledgeable, that they were land use in Town of Kent. But there was the car, they didn't recognize the car at first and felt, you know, I guess they were nervous about it, whatever. So those are kind of some of the things I think are important to support the folks that do make, have to make business and so on. I don't want a vehicle, I know Roxbury has a vehicle for the first time, but I like my old rusted white truck. Handles everything with me, but anyway, so, yeah, those are good questions, and I planned on talking about it, I'm glad you brought that up, so.
Okay.
Sure. Any other questions, let me know, I will have that, that use and policy to you guys here soon. He actually. Yep, Tim, he's going to beat on me.
No, I put my hand up before about the, when you guys were talking about parking, and just so you guys are on the radar.
Oh, right.
This is something that I kind of discovered recently for fire lanes, it's something that's kind of an important thing, whether it be at the schools and by between the different businesses, everything like that. There actually isn't a state statute to enforce them. The state actually references that the town has to make a local ordinance in order to enforce fire lanes. So I'm going to be working on that, so you guys should see that probably in the next couple of weeks as well, too. Just want to make you guys aware of that, as you guys are talking about the greater parking issue as a whole, I just figured that that might be rolled into that as well.
Yeah, and to follow up on that, what Tim's referencing, what he just found out about it, is he did have Motor Riot move the vehicle out of the, that roadway next to the Kent Kitchen area, that is a fire lane, I consider it a fire lane. So that's where we got it going on, that we needed a new ordinance, so we'll do a new ordinance, yeah, coming up soon.
I think we're going, our board is going to have a
Record.
A record of the most ordinances in a two-year period.
Close, but yeah, I think you're right on. Okay, all right, I think we're in subcommittee reports at this point. We're not, unless I missed something? Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything to report on broadband because we haven't had a meeting. Sustainability team, I kind of covered it in my my Selectmen's report. I did find the Did I include this? Yeah, so. Yeah, the Volt Post electric vehicle charger, we talked a little bit about that. They seem very interested in both locations of the town hall and the Welcome Center. And and I did reach out to Tim Waldron to let him know and to sort of see if he could help.
Yeah, no, it's a good.
And I also reached out to Gulu and John Mcfee to let them know as well, because I figured since the garden cottages were right there, they might be, they might have clients that would want to use the charger.
Yeah.
So they seemed very excited and supportive of it, so I was glad that I had done that. And then the other cool thing is that sustainable, the sustainability team is talking about doing a public art mural.
I saw that.
And so we're in the very beginning stages. The goal would be to have it possibly done by next birthday. There's, Sustainable Connecticut has a community match, like a crowdfunding source thing, where they'll match six thousand dollars to try and get people to donate. Kind of like the same thing that the two-hundred-and-fiftieth committee did, it's the exact same thing, idea where people are matching and then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where would you put the mural?
We're still working on it. Hopefully it'll be outside in a place where a lot of people can see it, yeah.
Yeah, hopefully, I mean, that's a plan, right?
Yeah, so, we'll see. Chugging along.
The, great, Resitrooper Report, I'm going to get to Vicki, she's been working a lot of weekends, so I did call her in this month to explain this, but I think maybe October we'll have her come in and sit with you guys for a little bit. She'll be participating in the EPI next week as well, so she's working a lot of hours. And thankfully, the, I think she has some community hours that she's been working on, so that's been good. But she has spent a lot of time on the weekends, and happy to do it up at North, North Canton, and then making routes. She's back at the school, she has been doing some additional hours at the school because of the situation in Minneapolis. Concerns with, you know, school safety and so on, so she's been spending a little more time on that, so hasn't been quite on the road, although, you know, she's somehow makes, puts a car in the right place where people actually see it, with the lights going on, you know, just to.
Does she work closely with their school safety officer?
David, yes, oh, definitely, yeah, meets with them almost every day and she's there.
Oh.
He's quite, have you met him yet?
Yeah, I've met him.
Yeah, he's, he's a state or a Danbury police officer, retired, very, very nice guy, very sharp guy. So I'm over at Kent School, I went over there to meet with Jeff Cattell, the one time, just talked about cooperating with whatever we can cooperate in, and he was over there, so. Anyway, so yeah, well, Vicki's doing great, she's going to be taking some time off to go to Dubai to see her family, grandson over there, granddaughter, new granddaughter, so, yeah. She's doing great, so, okay, Selectmen Reports. You kind of hit that?
Me?
Anything else?
All right, I'll go. Yeah, mine's light this month, the Economic Development Subcommittee, we disbanded, so we did not need to do anything there. So this is what I have, we talked about, or I talked about student historians slash ambassadors, whatever they should be called. I did talk to the Marv Wood, some of the Marv Wood administration, they're excited about this idea, actually, to get kids more, even more involved in the town. So it was very well received. The students returned this, this week, later this, this week. So, so next week when I have classes, I'll reach out to, to them and see if they're interested. So I want to, I want to try to make sure that we have a, have a group of people who are interested before I reach out to other schools. So, so everyone's coming back, you know, I think Kent and South Kent, they've been, I think they've, they have kids here now, actually. But, but I'm going to give it a week or two and ask them if it gets settled. So, so I'll have more the next, the next meeting about that, when we meet again. Can I get me to spill the story? I noted that I, after I wrote, you know, I just cut and paste what was on the Town of Woodbury website, and it had like O there, like C, like the state statute there, it was actually misrepresented. It's actually D, so that's all that that is right there, so, so I had trouble finding that for a while, wait a second. So, so that was that. And then my last bit is a bunch of questions that I don't know about, and a lot of this grew out of the fact that I was, you know, getting my room at Marv Wood already to, you know, to teach, I was doing some things. And I saw Marge Smith and members of the Kent Historical Society at the Skiff Mountain Schoolhouse. And I said, oh, so I just went outside and I chatted with them, I walked inside, we were talking about things, about how the kids could help, you know, the historical society. And I know that they own, you know, they own that property. But then I asked about the Kent Hollow Schoolhouse, right? So, so I asked them about that, and I didn't, I wasn't quite aware of this, maybe I was, maybe, but, but the Town of Kent owns that, right?
Are you sure about that?
That's, I'm not sure.
I had heard that it wasn't the town.
Yeah, I heard the same thing, and that went for the cemetery as well, it's a private cemetery.
It's Dr. Brent Colstrum.
What is that, what is that? That schoolhouse, like, who?
I believe it's an association or something that owns that per, from that area. It may be a small A, not an actual, you know, formal one, but I know, talking to Brent in the past, I went down and looked at it one time, I was just curious, like you, years ago, and just checked it out. They do keep it and clean it up and mow around it, and so.
Bottoms rent.
Brent, yeah, Brent.
I forget who it was, two different people said, oh yeah, the Town of Kent owns that, so we do not own that, okay, we don't. It's an association that has that, okay?
I mean, it's like a group of neighbors that take care of it. And they, they do have things, I know in the past they've had things like a potluck community meal there.
Yes.
So, but Brent's the man who knows.
So, so has that association always taken care of that? That's always been, that's always been part of the historical society, it's never been part of Kent?
No, I think it was always had folks from the hollow.
Okay, okay, all right, all right, so that was, so where I was going with this, you know, I said, you know, wait on the Swift House thing, because I wasn't sure if we own that or not, the Town of Kent. And if a group of concerned neighbors take care of that. So anyway, that answered my question. So it's a Brent Colstrum.
Yeah, he's the, he's.
He's the man, he has all the answers for you.
Forty-one South, that seems to be.
I'll talk to Brent and I'll get back to you with what he says to me the next morning. That's all I got.
Okay. All right, a couple of quick things. Orness update, yeah, I talked to Maria about that again today. Yeah. Well, not yet from V, but they will be going forward, and we, I am hearing that there's a some organization that might be challenging the, the ordinance decision, or the state's movement on this, or lobbying the state to actually do something more with that. But we'll see where that goes yet, but right now we're waiting for deep approval, or final approval, so.
So it would be like October fourth, wouldn't it?
That'd be the day, yeah, right, so yeah, exactly, next couple of weeks, so hopefully soon. The Foodways Composting Grant.
That is sad news.
It's like they came out, it's like groups came out of deep love them to death, but that maybe had nothing to do with it, oh, yeah, we can do regulations, because they're now permits and changes and, and all that stuff are having to go through it all. And it can be anywhere from ten weeks to get everything done, to three months, to five months. So we're working on it, and that kind of, as we said, hits the metro store boxes, because if they start filling up with that, we don't have, we don't have the collection vehicle we're supposed to have as part of the grant. We're supposed to get another vehicle to help do, collect that and move this stuff around, so we'll continue to work on that, but.
So are there, are there no, no other towns that are actually using these things? We're like right on the cutting edge?
Others are using it, I think Danbury, I'd have to, it was Danbury, Ridgefield, I think are the ones that already have composting systems in place, that they're using, they're not helping collect. But we're the first ones to actually get the new, a new composting system. But the state didn't like the design all of a sudden, they didn't like the conics, they didn't like it being put on asphalt. And then when we said, okay, we'll cut the asphalt and we'll put, you know, concrete base on it, and they said, well, then there's runoff, so we have to go through another runoff. You know, the four different, yeah, it, yeah, if you want to ever get Rick, you know, go and talk about that. But we're continuing on, Jen Eaton-Jones from HRA has been on this, and yeah, we'll keep working, so. Groundfield stuff, I really don't have anything more on that one, I am not hearing anything more that's in private hands. Yeah, I know. Exercise coming up, we're working that all together, I think I sent you guys some of that.
Yeah, that was cool, that was interesting. I'm sad I'm not going to be around.
Well, yeah, it's going to be, we usually try to do it during the day, but with the traffic light walk-through at nine, it kind of pushes the ax, so. I will say that. I will say that under thirteen executive session, we can take that off because I get the word that Teamsters contract, the Teamsters itself have approved it. It just has to go through the final union write up and write the contract. Then we'll get back for you all to, to agree to and so on. But everything I went through before executive session seems to have gone through. So. It's waiting for the final. So yeah, that's nice. We'll get this done. And so on. Shatticoke, nothing new on that. Veterans committee, that's the big, that's the interesting one. We had that last Wednesday, Tuesday, I believe. And a lot of folks in walking by the veterans memorial, it's kind of getting overgrown with the trees. If you see that in the front. There's the group that's in there, there's Andy Osip. It's like Van Buckenberg, Bill Case, his wife and, and others have, from the veteran's side said, you know, we just really love to have it where it's more noticeable and more involved. So talked to Rick. I looked around the front and I said, I don't know why it wasn't, but there's, there's actually room to put it on the front lawn in the, in the front corner. It'd have to be built up a little bit, but. So they said, well, could we look at doing that? And I said, no, I don't know why not. I mean, we can take it to town and see what they think. I think a lot of it would have to be fundraised for that, like it was fundraised to do some of the, the monuments there. But it could potentially moved and opening up Swift House or whatever in that corner, you know, and actually getting it back into even the, during the Memorial Day parade. We have to, you know, kind of screw around with some people up there. Nobody gets to see it. This, we could actually look at bringing the parade up this way. And if there's anything going on in this corner housing later, we're bringing it back in. So looking down the future, I thought, that actually might be great. And my little, one of my pet peeves enjoys a laugh at this one because she thinks I'm crazy, is actually bringing a walkway kind of from the corner, kind of corner to where the Kent Boulevard, Kent Green sidewalk is, that goes behind the Shanghai and all that. Cutting there into the, and actually having a walk into the monument park area and then from there to the front of the, of the school, or front of the, excuse me, town hall. And because again, if there's more traffic on this road, we don't want people walking inside where there's no sidewalk in this.
That's true.
And that's still all private. It's still all John Casey property. It's not ours. So we, not ready right now in my time left to, to recommend any kind of, of, of public walkway on that. But would be something nice to bring people in front lawn as well. I mean, something to look at. We'll see. And so anyway, that's kind of.
Speaking of which, you never brought before us the idea that was proposed to you about the rec center?
Oh, yeah, that's, I'm still talking on that one. Yeah.
But don't you think that we should be involved?
Let me see if there's even a possibility of that even happening. I'm meeting with Jim Mills tonight tomorrow.
Oh.
So yeah, I'm hoping that.
Sounded like the way he presented it to planning zoning.
Well, it's changed. So it's changed. And that's why I'm meeting with him to say, okay, where are we really, where, what can we do? What? Yeah. But it's, they're still perking. I just don't know how high it's going to perk at this point. But yeah, you guys will be about, well, yeah. I don't think I've got too many things from you. I don't think.
That was a surprise to me.
Well, that was, well, that, yeah, that, yeah, that, yeah.
It stood because it's, it's land. It's, you know, you, but that's definitely something we can be talked about in executive session too.
You can. And I just, I need to get tomorrow with Jim. Yeah, we, we've been trying, he's been, I'm gone. I was gone for, or whatever, to see my brother. So yeah, but tomorrow at two thirty, we're going to sit and talk a little bit about that. So we'll definitely bring that back. Yeah, we could talk in executive session on that. We'll see what we can do. Yeah. Because I don't know. I mean, they're still looking at, I know inland wetlands, they want for them to start that process. So, but there's some changes. Yeah. So, yeah, let me get this.
That's one thing also about, I know that our, it can be very wet.
Correct.
Our yard.
Correct. And again, that whole thing is going to have to be looked at, but this would be brought out. Sure. Right. It'd have to be raised up. Yeah, definitely. We had that same, if you look at the, where it is now, it's exactly what happened with soaking up of the soft granite. So we'd be building something up. So that's what they did. They actually built it up a little bit. We have a lot of talented people around here, the gobbles. Who are great and they did great last time. But, and there's others that, you know, that Bill McCann and, and others that would be all, I'm sure helping to do that. But again, that's why it would be a fundraiser. I mean, the town would.
But remember before it was not a town committee.
Correct.
It was a committee under the historical society, which made fundraising a lot easier.
Exactly. Right. Well, but yeah, we can, and we'll work that out. Yeah, exactly. But, but we can, you know, there's some things you can do that focus on specific things and, or offset dollar for dollar and something like that. So, yeah. That we have to look at all that. That's part of what we'll be doing in the next month or so. Getting some ideas. But I wanted to let you guys know that with some discussions. And that I, I have really. Like I said, thirteen executive session, I would take that off, modify that. So. I guess public comment. Public.
Rick?
Rick? Yes, sir.
I just looked at the assessor's website and the schoolhouse in Kent Hollow is listed as Town of Kent. And we also cover on our insurance. I've seen it on that list.
Okay.
Interesting. I stand corrected.
I don't think the contributor's in the maintenance of it. The Kent Hollow Association does it.
Yeah, Kent Hollow Association. Okay, good.
Thank you for.
Thank you, Rick. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you sir, you certainly may.
Under public comment, thank you, Rick. I also knew that the Kent Hollow was under the Town of Kent. But I also have a question of the last few weeks, we've had protests in the town of Kent. And I was wondering, do we actually have an ordinance against people standing in the, in the sightline for intersections and standing in crosswalks, stopping all people going up and down Route seven?
There is no ordinance. We have the First Amendment to the Bill of Rights that says people can peaceably assemble and have a right to, you know, free speech and so on. So that's, that's where we go off of. I mean, somebody's asked me that before and I said, listen, if there's, we can't limit on public property, people congregating and having, you know, espousing a, a certain point of view, as long as they're not interfering with, with traffic or flow or safety issues and so on. I didn't see any of that. If somebody is, is doing that, we certainly will, will let everyone know. Again, I'll put, I could put a notice out that, about that, but I don't believe we have an ordinance.
I have, I have pictures of people and I've been getting yelled at when I have to stop at the crosswalk because they're standing in the crosswalk. Which means under federal state law, we're supposed to stop when people are inside the crosswalk area. And it's happened now. This weekend and two weekends ago, or three weekends ago, when there was a conga line that went across in front of Kazzies, up in front of the library, across the crosswalk, stopping all traffic. And I think that. At some point. The, the town or the, the police need to say, if you want to have a, I don't care if people want to protest, but they shouldn't be making people stop at the crosswalks because they're standing in the crosswalks.
You're right. If they're just standing there not proceeding either one way aside to another, then yeah, that's, that's, that is interfering with traffic and we can look in that. Certainly if you would share any pictures or any, not that I'm looking for individuals, but I'm looking for the, the incidents of someone actually being there. And we can let people know if, you know, we find, you know, right to assemble, right to peacefully, you know, protest, whatever, the guarantee, we're all for that. I don't think anybody is against that. But you can't hinder people on the sidewalk. You can't hinder people in traffic and so on. So we'll definitely use that to remind people. That's a good point. A very good point.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Bye. Thanks. Thanks, Ed. Anyone else on public comment? Okay.
If I can just follow up on what Mr. Osborne said. So, so that's where I was going with this. So, so, so my questions remain. How, when did the town purchase the Kent Hollow Schoolhouse? How long have neighbors maintained this property?
It may be one of those deals where the town owns the property underneath. It would, it'd be good to talk to the assessor and find out exactly. And talk to Brent. I'm sure Brent knows.
So yeah, so I'll still talk to Brent, the assessor. So, so clearly there's a group of concerned citizens in this town maintaining what seems to be a town property of some sort. So.
There's a lot of weirdness in this town like that, you know? It's like the community houses, the building is owned by the town. The land around it is owned by the church. You know, the ambulance barn.
Yes.
The building is owned by the fire department and I believe the land around it is owned by the town.
That's all it is. Whether or not it's been used and whether it's reverted back to town, that's the question that, you know, we haven't dug into yet, but yeah.
So, so regarding that schoolhouse, I mean, I'll, I'll do my research and see. But if, but if you come across any.
Yeah, I can, I can go with the assessor and see what the background is, get the dates. Yeah, so.
But thank you, Brent.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. One more shot for anybody with public comment. Okay, hearing none. We should be adjourned.
So moved?
On paper.
Hi.
Great. Thank you. adjourned at.
Everybody?
Yeah. Eight thirty? Okay.